They picked the...
Folks, we're gonna start back up. All right, we're back online. And we're back in session. And Jenny, would you take us through your memo?
Sure.
Does that work?
Okay, so what you found on your desk tonight was a memo highlighting the changes that have been made since the preliminary, and also the tentative budget with the capital plan. I suggest that you place it right in the front of your budget binder, but obviously, it's your choice where you would like to store it. So I just wanted to go over the highlights of what was changed from our budget meeting from last week, which continued on through with our finance committee meeting. So there, page one lists the changes that were added back into the budget. One is that cyber insurance for $25,000. Equipment rental for DPW of $15,000. Break room repairs for City Hall of $4,000. Break room bathroom and supply repairs at the Parks Building of $6,000. Purchase services for cleanup services and code of $5,000. Contingency was increased by $26,500 to bring it up to an even $200,000. And just to clarify, the reason I'm reading these out is basically just for the audience. City Hall capital outline for the door security system that will be funded through the building reserve for $30,000. $13,000 for public art, which will be funded through our local, one of our local programs for CDBG. The fire overtime of $126,250, which has the related cost of retirement for $46,000 and FICA of $10,000. We got an updated quote from the police chief on the camera system for the public safety. It was originally at $110,000. The updated quote is now 85, so we were able to reduce that by $25,000. Also, a $300 item we were able to eliminate because it was purchased this year. Then, the police chief asked for a change of the use of the crime proceeds, reducing the uniform reserves by $5,000 and reallocating that to special procession trainings because he has a purpose of what he would like to have his staff experience. And then, the water plant, there was a piece of equipment, a module, that they're going to buy in 2025. So we took that out of the request and we just moved it to transfers to capital projects. So that net came to $281,450. And on page two, we show how that was funded. Now, at the end of the budget meeting of last Wednesday, it really wasn't decided on how to fund it, but the conversation continued at the finance committee. And it was decided to increase the tax levy to cover those additional costs by the $263,000. $30,000, as I mentioned, will come out of the building reserve for the door security system. $25,000 will be decreased from the public safety reserve and $13,000 from the local program for the public art. So, as a result of all these changes, the preliminary budget, increasing from the preliminary budget, the tax levy now increase is $560,450 or 10.139%. The total building reserve was increased by $30,000 and the public safety reserve was decreased by $25,000. And then, I gave you the detail on the fire and police overtime because we had quite a long discussion on the fire overtime. So the 2026 request for fire overtime, non-training hours, was for 9,000 hours. The '24 budget included 7,000 hours and that was reduced in 25 to 5,000 due to the additional of the four firefighters to have seven firefighter crews. At the October 29th meeting, it was decided to include 7,500 hours in the tentative budget. So that increased the benefit cost overtime. So I summarized how much is in the '26 tentative budget for fire overtime. For non-training overtime, it's $367,500. Training overtime of $86,625. Retirement cost of $166,000. FICA cost of $35,000. That's a total of $650,125 within the tentative budget just for fire overtime. And just for police overtime, we have overtime of $325,000, retirement of $111,000, and FICA of $25,000, or a total of $461,000. And according to the police chief, this number will be coming down as he gets his positions filled. And I also needed to update you on the total taxable assessment value. By, technically by law, we are to use the July 1st tax roll for our tax bills creation and also for our tax limit formula. However, the state informed the city of Onyanta the changes in franchise assessments, which the state controls. Those changes happened after the July 1st roll came out. I just found out about these last week. I called the state and asked which one I should use for the formula. And because the city is so far away from its tax cap or its tax limit, she said that I would be able to use what is going to be based on the 2026 tax bills. So what I'm showing you here is that the total taxable assessment was decreased by $891,000. And due to this, the estimates that I provided to you last week will increase the tax bill by approximately $3 for the starting range and the ending range of what we provided last week. And then, what I did here for your information, I updated the tax cap formulas and showed what the levy would be and what the rate would be based on the new assessment. That's on your third page of today's memo. So that highlights the changes from our results from last week's meetings. Now, I didn't know if there were any other items that any of the council members would like to discuss to continue the discussion from the budget meeting last week so that we can take more information from you for the next round of budget discussions.
Well, one of the items that I'd like to think that the council might consider was the executive assistant, or that's a working title, that doesn't make it into this budget. But we only had, I think, half a dozen of our council members here, and now we have our full contingent. And there were a number of points that were made in its favor. I don't know that I want to be the one to kind of lay that all out there. Do we have, in your book?
Yep, could I update that? Just so the council members know, the estimate with a family plan to hire that new position would be $99,000. What I did not share with you last week was that if that position gets approved and if the duties get approved to assistant HR, we'll be able to eliminate the HR part-time budget, which is about $28,000. So the net cost of that position would be $71,000 if council was to approve.
And that's inclusive of all? That's not, it's the salary and the benefits?
Yeah, that's benefits, yes. It's salary, FICA, and retirement, and health insurance.
Do we have the kind of extrapolation of what that proposed position would cover in the book here?
It would be in the budget request form. I don't, let me figure out which page that's on.
Just for those who haven't.
Do I recall, I have the number 66,000? If that's actually what, with the reduction from the HR position, that's the number?
Well, not exactly. The reason being is because the original estimate assumed that the person was going to be a member of the retirement system. I did not put that in the preliminary budget to be a member of the retirement system. So that's why it's modified.
It is the first page? That's right. So if you go to page three in wages and benefits in...
It's appendix B.
Appendix C. Those who were not, and that would be Lynn and Shannon. So does the council want to have some conversation around this?
I definitely do. I definitely want to, around this carries the city clerk's salary and some of the other people's salaries. I want to have conversations about.
Sure. Do we want to talk about this first and then get to that other thing?
Yeah, I would just like to, you know, continue to advocate. I think this is a highly important position, given, you know, the demands, you know, and the requests from the public for improved communication, transparency. I feel like this is really essential to help us get ahead of, you know, try to get ahead of the tide of misinformation and get accurate information to the public that will help inform their opinions and our decisions. And so, I really would advocate that we find a way to fund this.
Does Emily, yes, done?
I don't think we should do it at this time. We're already adding, I think it's $2,252,000 to the budget compared to last year. Looking at almost 11% tax increase, or 10% rather, tax increase. Our spending is going up almost 11%. I don't think we need it at this time.
Cecilia?
I'm sorry. There was one thing that I think will help the council with this discussion. In the preliminary budget, I provided a new schedule. So if you go to... Page... Please go to page 26 of your preliminary budget. That was just laid on your desk this week. Page 26?
Of the preliminary?
Of the, yeah, what you got, the C, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, of the tentative budgets, thank you. This is a new schedule. And what this does, does everybody have it in front of them? So what this does is, page 25 and 26, what I've done here is show you the summary of the general fund budget changes by department. And I put it in order of the change from the 26 adopted to the 26 tentative. And so, I go from the lowest to the highest. And you'll see down at the bottom that I've got eight categories in red ink. And then, if you go to page 26, I detail those eight items, those eight areas. They constitute for 2.1 million of the 2.2 million increase in the general fund. And just so the audience knows what we're looking at, it consists of special items. Insurance and taxes and judgments and contingencies, that total is $132,000. Off-street parking for the paving of Wall Street Lot and supplies and contractual, that net is $155,000. Shared buildings at City Hall, the repair of the elevator pump and the door access control system, salaries, fringe benefits, and supplies and contractual, that totals $167,000. The debt service for the BAN on Market Street was $225,000, but it was a net of $222,000 by the other debt going down by the $2,000. The police department, they've got equipment going up $85,000, salaries, fringe benefits, and supplies and contractual of a total of $225,000. Parks for their equipment, which is tractors, forklifts, and a utility vehicle, and there's, and all of their other categories, that totals $248,000. Maintenance of roads, again, for their equipment of various vehicles with plows and sanders, and their salaries, fringe benefits, supplies totals $412,000. The fire department, their air packs, salaries and fringe benefits total $555,000. In that total, $871,000 is going to be funded by the reserves. That is for all the capital purchases. So the rest of the increases, it's $282,000 for salaries, $539,000 for fringe benefits, with most of that being the police and fire retirement, and $70,000 for supplies and contractual, special items of $132,000, and debt service for $222,000. I thought this was important to show the council members where the majority of the money is for the increase in the general fund budget. And that will give you the information that I think you'd need to focus on where the costs are increasing and for your consideration in your discussions.
Right, very good. Cecilia?
Oh, this isn't related necessarily to the data that Jenny just provided. It was more just in support of the executive assistant position. So I just wanted to implore my fellow council members to support the creation of acquisition because I think it is imperative that the chief administrative officer have the administrative support, but then also, the public needs robust communication from City Hall. And devoted staff personnel who is able to do that kind of communication. It takes skill and training. So I really want to just impress upon the council that I think it is really, like, long overdue.
Scott?
Part of the job duties of the clerk's office is to support Greg. And if Greg's not using that, that's up to Greg. And I don't know how you put this in when he's already got that help. So, I mean, I don't know. I don't mean that meanly. I know it came out meanly. I don't mean it that way. It's just, you know, so there is support there for him. I'm trying to wrap my head around how do we justify this position when he's already got the support. All we wanted to do was add a public information officer. So I don't, if we're gonna talk about a public information officer, I think that's great. But the way that it's written up in here, I'm not sure I can get my head around it. I think that that's my big holdup is I don't understand it. The justification to me just isn't there. So I don't know if Greg wants to kind of like, you know, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Greg. It's just, it's just a general thing of what I'm thinking, so.
Can I just say one thing before Greg responds?
Sure.
Because I agree to a certain extent that the duties that we were provided don't necessarily, that's not 100% the direction that I would like to see the position go. I said at the last meeting, it's still true that I don't support them. Like, trying to share duties with HR, that seems like, you know, too, like, we have too many expectations of this person, which we often do, as I'm sure you guys can attest at City Hall. But so, I am in support of this under the assumption that we are funding the body and the general purpose of the position and that the creation of the civil service title and the duties would come once the position is funded. So that's, like, because I, I mean, I agree with you, so I just wanted to throw that out there to a certain extent. And also, just make sure that, like, that is a real thing and I'm on target with that line of thinking and that that's how this will go. Because I agree that if it's as written, like, I don't think I would support it either.
Greg, did you want to respond to Scott's question? Let me, like, Greg respond and then I'll...
So you've said that a bunch of times, Scott, that the city clerk's office is there to support the city administrator. But the duties that I consider, you know, we need are additional duties that the clerk's office cannot and does not provide now. There's a limit to what the clerks can do, just like there's a limit to what I can do. So I would see this position as providing additional value. The reason for combining it with HR office is understanding our budget situation, understanding the cost of adding a new full-time position, and understanding the fact that, you know, we have vacancy right now in that part-time HR position. And that position served in part to support me as HR does, and I am HR as well as, you know, as a big part of the city administrator's role. There are things that that individual was doing to support me as well. And I think having a closer connection, working relationship with HR is important, especially now that the council has eliminated the HR director position. We have a principal HR specialist and, you know, the structure we have there. I think I need to take a little bit more of a closer working relationship with them. I think this could help that. Having this person kind of split, essentially, is 20 hours per week for HR and 20 hours per week for these other things, or however that works out in the end. But it's a cost-effective way to try to address the issue. I think that public communication is chiefly the city administrator's duties. And, you know, it's part of my responsibility for the city is to work with our staff to make sure that that is happening. And I think this position could help in that role. I think the city clerk's primary job duties are not necessarily overlapping with this. I think they're complementary. I think there's gaps that we just cannot get to. We don't have the time. There is no capacity there to add. There are things that we can't get to now because we just don't have the capacity. So I don't, I don't see it as a failure on my part to delegate work that's appropriate, which I think is what you're saying, or...
No, I'm not hitting the call.
I don't mean failure is the wrong word there. But it seems as though you'd expect that I would utilize the clerk's office differently. And I'm not quite sure what they wouldn't be doing to allow them time to do this because we don't have the time now to, you know, for instance, the example I'd like to use, something this position could do. We have a website. Every department and various, you know, various aspects of the city are on there. The clerk's office does a good job of updating certain things. But there are certain, there's a lot on there. And individual department webpages, we don't have time. And we need to involve department heads and their staff in those things. And they don't have the time on their own to take and do that. So this person, under my direction, working with department heads and others, would be able to do some of that legwork and keep those things up to date and tie things together, following up on things. And we talk about some of the, you know, flash vote, that sort of thing, reaching out, like, things that are not the official communications of the city, not the minutes, not the agendas, not the press releases and that sort of thing, but added value communications. I think that that's where this person can come in. We've talked about coordinating with different groups, events and that sort of thing. That was the top of the conversation recently. I think they can add value to all those different areas. I think it's really something that, one way or the other, we don't have enough hours in the people that we have now to address it. So where you add that, you know, it's gotta go somewhere. You just can't get to it now as much as we try. If I answered your questions, Scott.
I want to go to Cecilia and then to Elaine.
I mean, Greg, you know, is able to eloquently state, I think, the persuasive. I just wanted to mention that I think the description that we were given does offer, I think, a persuasive argument for the creation of an assistant city administrator. And I actually think that would be something that would be the most effective for this organization, but that's costly, obviously. And so, what I think we're given here is a really creative solution to what's been a longstanding, since, at least since I've been familiar with the public interaction and public engagement with the city, that this is a creative, I think, an imaginative response that will create efficiency between the HR and then these other duties, HR department specifically, and then these other duties. So I actually think it's, it's pretty, I think it would be quite effective.
Yeah, and just to, you know, add on to that, you know, I think, to the point that Greg was making about adding on to that communication that already is existing is that the sense that I get is that everybody is already maximized, like, the city staff are already maximized and maxed out, right, on what they can provide as far as services with communication to the public. And constantly, you know, I'm in agreement that, you know, since I've started in this position since before, all I've heard is the public wants more communication. They want information from the city. They want clear communication. They want consistent communication. And I think our staff have, you know, done everything that they can with the resources that they have. And now, we need to add more resources to meet the public, what the public needs to hear from us truthfully.
Mike?
Much of what I was gonna say Elaine just said, but I just wanted to add. The number one complaint I get in my ward, even more than parking or, like, snow clearing or anything like that, is having it difficult to get information. And I think what I hear from people is not, like, people report that if they need an answer to a question and they call, that the staff are always willing to help them. But it takes the person to be, the member of the community to be active to seek out the information as opposed to the information just kind of getting sent out to them. And so, I think that's what a public information officer could do. I also wanted to add, for those of you who weren't here last week, I think we had, I mean, we were rehashing some of what we said last week, but there seemed like there was pretty strong support for it, but we didn't put it in the funded column because there were people with concerns.
That's correct. We were four out of six.
Yeah, four out of six, sorry.
Any further, yes, come on.
So Greg, what type of formal education are you looking for? Am I missing that here in this job description? I'm not really seeing it. If you're splitting 20 hours with you and 20 hours with HR, what type of formal education would you look for? Well, we haven't written, you know, finalized a job description like Katie alluded to. I would have to go through the civil service commission to determine exactly what education and experience, training requirements would be needed, but... Okay. Let me rephrase and say, what kind of experience would you be looking for? Is this someone fresh out of their formal education environment? Or is this someone that's got a few years working in the workforce? I would think it'd be someone with a few years' experience. Not necessarily straight out of a college program. But it would be someone who obviously has to have excellent communication skills. They have to have the ability to use all the various technologies that we use to communicate. I can't say that there would be a particular degree at this point. I think that's something I have to discuss more with Dave Corey and figure out what the job description would be. Right, but I mean, at this salary range, you're gonna be asking for somebody who at least would be a, right? Most likely. I would assume there would be a college degree, but there's usually those different levels of training and experience that's required in a combination of this and that. Wouldn't necessarily require that. I won't commit to that because I haven't figured that out.
So, we're not taking a vote here in a formal way, but we had done that through our last meeting where folks that felt like they could not be supportive of, in this particular case, a position, would simply raise their hand and say that, so it's easier to count, frankly, those who are not in support of adding this position to our budget. So if there's, yes?
I'm looking for your asking to raise your hand.
He already had you in that column, but, all right, so, so...
As long as, I could say something, I'd just like to reiterate. We're looking at a lot of the small things, and I would urge the council members to look at the big picture as well. And remember, we're increasing the budget by a lot. And if we're adding, this could be potentially, you know, the numbers vary here, $100,000 or $70,000 or something like that, still a lot of money. Do we want to keep adding more expenses to the city? We need a PR person, and that's all we need. That's one thing. But to keep, you know, right now, we're gonna, it's, I think, is it right? Two million, basically, two and a quarter million dollars more? That's a lot of money. I think it's too much. So when I look at the big picture, this individual job, we could have a halftime or we could not have it. We could add it at another time. But I look at the big picture and I think it spends too much money.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sorry. Let me go to Shannon and then to Mike.
Tom?
Yes?
What are some things that you hear from city employees when you talk to them about their roles?
What do I hear?
What are some things that you hear, like, feedback from city employees when they talk to you?
I think most of the employees that I've spoken to like their jobs.
Yeah, they like their jobs. Do they talk about how they feel around the work, or do they feel overworked?
No one has said that to me. However, in general, if you ask people in any job, they would probably say they're overworked and underpaid.
Okay, so, but I feel like they've mentioned here several times how, you know, there's not enough capacity. Age, you know, the clerk has talked about how they are, you know, working at capacity. Almost all the departments have described how they are, like, just exhausted. And so, I'm curious, how would you go about solving that issue if we've got employees and talent here that we want to keep, right, but are exhausted?
I'm all for keeping employees. I think retention is very important. And the way to usually, based on my own experience, as when I was working full-time, what would retain me was the opportunity to advance in my job, go to a higher level and make more money.
Okay, so more money, so a salary increase. Okay, so, but if we were talking about possibly not increasing salaries that much, but also, like, if we don't have a way to unburden the workload from them, like, what could be possible outcomes?
You're making an assumption that everybody says that... You, you're making an assumption that everybody says that they're overworked. You asked me if they ever said that to me, and the answer was no.
Okay, all right, sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, let me, Jenny, give me a minute, um, we're gonna go to Mike. Mike?
Yes, uh, I guess I have a West, Jen, or two for Greg or Jenny, um, because I haven't been through the budget process before. I know at the university, often there are positions created that are not necessarily seen to be permanent positions, but they're like a three-year position, a five-year position, that may or may not, without the assumption that it's gonna get, necessarily get funded perennially. Does the city ever do that? Is that something possible? And then the second question is realistically, when would somebody, how soon would we be wanting to define this position and hire it? Like, can we think about putting in the budget, you know, a half-year position, like, because it might not be tuned before we actually got the person?
Yeah, I mean, the city budget, obviously, it's an annual budget, the city sets a budget every year, so no position is guaranteed until it's funded. Um, civil service wise, you have a temporary appointment, we have one of those now in the clerk's office, it's up to eighteen months, you can have a temporary civil service appointment. I believe it can be longer than that, check with Dave for it, there's exceptions that I'm not privy to, but, um, so that. As far as the civil service appointment process, that is the answer. As far as funding, as long as you fund it, the council can change funding anytime. So, so as far as the second part of your question, you could fund anything for a half year or a part of the year, um, you know, through the funding dictate how long it can be filled.
How ideally, if this position was gonna be created, how soon would you want us ideally?
I mean, there'd be no reason not to proceed right away, you know, if it was funded.
All right, I want to go to Elaine and then Jenny.
Yeah, so along with that, uh, one thing that I would like us to consider, um, to help fund this position, is, uh, you know, consider again, putting the occupancy tax into, um, our revenues, uh, because we know now that it's very likely, we know that it's going up again in January, um, and that could help us fund this, but, you know, because honestly, looking at these big items again, they are things that we looked at really, really carefully. I mean, this is fire department, you know, we've looked at that budget really carefully. Maintenance of road, parks, police, you know, all of these items are ones that we really scoured through last week, so we, we, I feel like we left no stone unturned. Um, we are at the point where we reduce any of these and we're just gonna end up eating that cost next year somewhere else. So what, that's where I support this budget, where we are planning for these expenses. I would rather plan for them than be surprised and have to take them at, you know, figure it out, you know, with contingency next year. So I really support that we fund all of the items that are here and the new position, and that we do look at this, um, you know, proposed tax increase, because the other position that we are in right now, which is why we're dealing with trying to catch up, is that our tax levy has not been catching up, um, for the past several years. It has been recommended that we increase, you know, to help us get to that point, and because we haven't done it before, we continue to do what we keep calling that kick the can down the road. And throughout our budget review committee experience, what we learned, and the message that I really took out of that experience, was every time we kick the can down the road, we are increasing our costs, we are leaving ourselves open to unexpected expenses, and those expenses are going to increase over time because of, uh, because of inflation. So I feel very strongly that we deal with this now while we're in a very strong position and get ourselves ahead in the game.
Okay, I want to go to Jenny and then to Cecilia, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to spin off of Shannon's comment, just to, uh, in support of recognition of the number of hours that the administrators put in, in every position in the city. And everybody is aware that they will get emails from Greg, all hours of the night, early morning, and just recognize the number of, uh, of hours that it's taking to complete all of the tasks, and then some tasks are not being completed because we just don't have any more energy or time. And I just wanted to kind of remind everybody of that, that's all.
Uh, Cecilia.
I just wanted to follow up on what Elaine was speaking about in terms of all of the various issues that keep getting passed along to the next year without really being dealt with, that that is precisely the kind of big picture thinking that I think we need to adopt as a council. That's the big picture.
Okay.
Um, the only thing that I wanted to say is that, like Don, I was kind of shocked when I looked at the updated tax cap limit formula sheet that you had given us and saw that, how far down on the grid we are from the cap. Um, that's quite a bit farther than I thought we were going to go, and we did, first of all, I want to acknowledge the work that, um, Jenny, you and Greg did, and those who were involved that I didn't know about, um, in reducing the budget by that amount prior to us bringing it back that way. Um, yeah, it's, I mean, I think that it's amazing that you were able to cut those things in the first place, um, and, you know, and we made certain choices that, you know, things that we feel are important, and that's, you know, really what we're here to do. Um, I forgot what I was gonna say. That's how that goes sometimes.
Anybody else want to weigh in?
Yeah, yeah.
Scott?
So if we put this back in, how much more does that really back up?
Dang it.
It, well, it would be a net of seventy-one thousand. So, but, again, um, I know that Mike mentioned last week at the meeting that he, you guys, the council did not talk about what to cut from the budget, um, and you discussed what to add, but you didn't discuss what to cut, if there were any items that you wanted to look at to see if we could reduce. Um, and so the seventy-one thousand, um, that would be the net increase, Scott, uh, between eliminating the part-time from the HR and then adding this position at a full-time status. So, um, you know, we would have to discuss if you decided to add it, you know, are, how are we going to fund it? Are we going to allocate more fund balance? Are we going to have another, um, revenue source that is not currently in the budget? If you guys wanted to take the risk on the occupancy tax, uh, but again, we don't have assurance that that's going to pass all the levels that it needs to get through, um, so it's, it's up for discussion.
Katie, I'm gonna back to you.
So I remembered the end of my sentence, which was that in addition to the things that we need necessary that made it into the budget, I think that we all hear from people, okay, so ten percent is hard to swallow, and we're gonna catch a lot of flak for it, um, but we all, we all hear from people that they want the city to be doing thing more, things better, better communication, et cetera, and like, I just don't, I appreciate where you're coming from, I just don't understand how we can expect the city to even remain the same, um, let alone, you know, grow, how we can expect more with less. And so I'm, I'm definitely in support of this, I've been advocating for, um, an additional body, sort of as Greg was saying, that, you know, I think the city clerk does really like the yeoman's share of city communications, and she's excellent at it, um, but we keep, you know, never let anyone know you're good at Excel because everyone will ask you to do your spreadsheet, right? And I feel like Carrie has let us know that she is very good at a lot of things, and we asked her to do a lot of things, um, but really truly like, you know, having another body in the room and sharing those duties and splitting them out is, I think, probably the best way forward in terms of mental health for our, for our staff, but also I think just effectiveness at the things that we're doing. Ron Swanson says, never half-ass two things, whole-ass one thing, and I live by that. So, I...
Half-ass anything, whole-ass.
And I just...
Never half-ass two things, whole-ass one thing. You put that in the paper, I can say it was Ron Swanson. So, anyway, um, so it is a lot to swallow, but I think one of the other things that I had really hoped that we would do this year, based on our conversations last year, was to put out similar to what the school district does before the budget vote, and I know that everyone votes on the budget, and that's why they do it, but I think it's really helpful to get something in the mail that says, like, here's why we're proposing what we're proposing, here's what you're going to get out of it, um, you know, here's what you can expect, and I think that that would really benefit our constituency this year in, in light of the fact that we have basically doubled what we were asking.
Okay, one.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I actually, I, I just wanted to say, I really agree, I think that, um, I agree that we should have a communication to the public about this budget and then also underline why we need somebody.
Yeah, this is non-communication.
Yeah, again.
True.
Um, and then I also just wanted to bring up, um, that I, I can't, and I can't from my notes find it, so I didn't write down the numbers, but when Alan Ruffels gave us a presentation and you were helping us understand the, um, state of things, right? I don't remember the numbers, but I do recall that other municipalities are in the same vote, and they are also looking at similar tax levels.
Alan did call me last Friday.
Oh, even larger, yes, that, okay, thank you for reminding me.
Alan did call me last Friday saying that the, uh, that he expects the county to do definitely between five and seven to eight percent, um, that's what they're discussing now. And he also said that, uh, in that report last week that he gave, that a, a number of counties are actually doing thirty percent tax increases, and, you know, twenty-four percent, eighteen percent, um, you know, I think one was forty-four percent. So it, yeah, it's, yeah, so it's, it's difficult all over.
Do you have a question? Do you know what the, uh, school tax is going on?
No, the school tax budget will not be determined until next June.
Thank you.
Shannon?
I just want to remind everybody that when we got audited by the state, and when I spoke to those people, they mentioned that Carrie's name was brought up by every single person they spoke to, and that it seemed like Carrie was so helpful, involved in so much, and there needed to be two Carries, that she's doing too much, that was very obvi- obvious and evident.
There was one person that did not discuss Carries.
Oh, just you, but...
I'm sorry, Elaine.
She's invaluable, and the state recognized she was invaluable, and I think it's important that we get her some support.
Sure, Elaine?
You're so right, and you know, and one of the other notes I had here was just Carrie, underlined, because it is just one of those things that when we're like, we have something new, what can we do? Let's ask Carrie. Um, uh, somebody has a question, you know, from the public, I don't know the answer to their question, you should call Carrie.
Carrie.
You know, and, and there is, we are so lucky to have a Carrie, but that also leaves us a little bit vulnerable, right? Because we are dependent on a Carrie, and when a Carrie is not here, we need to diversify how we're sharing, spending those resources so that we have multiple, you know, staff that can help us out in those roles, and also, just again, to go back to relieving our staff of the burdens that they have, and we do hear about it, I think, every single meeting, um, so we know how much our staff are investing, um, and we, you know, I, I recognize that our staff are our biggest, you know, strength here, and so I want to do everything we can to support that.
Jenny, I want to go to Mike.
Real quick, I just want to say, basically, so you're saying that the clerk needs help to carry the load? Right? Okay.
Jenny, and then one.
I just want to do some quick math with, um, Greg, so if you don't mind just thinking out loud for a minute, just for an option for you guys to consider, the presentation that we just had for the lease on Silas Lane, do we have when the lease would become effective in its twelve hundred dollars per month per acre? Is that correct?
Uh, see, it will become effective as soon as we enter an agreement, so let's say that that would be halfway through twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah, let's just do six months, maybe.
Yeah, I did, I did six months.
But is it twelve hundred dollars per month per acre, or is it twelve hundred dollars a month for the whole lot?
Per acre per year.
Per acre, so, and so...
Per acre per year? That's great.
Yeah, so, all right, so let's do twelve hundred.
I did it.
You do the largest.
Hang, 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 hang.
We'll do twelve hundred times, and right now, let's just do seven acres, just in case they don't get the variance. So that's eighty-four hundred dollars a month, and we multiply that by...
That's per year.
Oh, I, oh, I thought you said per month, sorry.
It's a hundred per.
Okay. So, um, sorry.
It was cute, you got excited.
Yeah, I, I was.
Jenny, I'm gonna go to Lynn.
Okay.
All right, so Jenny, you ready?
I am ready.
Jenny and I spent some time last night, so she probably already has the answers. So you answered my question tonight by the packet that you've given us for Appendix C under October twenty-ninth of twenty-twenty-five, where the hundred-and-sixty thousand coming out of the parking fund is gonna have to pave the lots and...
Correct.
Um, through this, two reams of paper, I found that we have, I believe, sixteen orange positions, and so those are vacant positions, correct? And personnel, the orange represents vacant?
Oh, yes, no.
No, it's part-time.
Orange is part-time?
Correct. I believe it's full-time or it's part-time.
Which is vacant, full-time?
In that, I did not show vacancies, the, the quarterly update I give to the HR, Finance HR Committee shows vacancies, in which case it's been orange outlined around it, but for the budget, we're talking about budgeted positions, I was just showing full-time or part-time, I didn't show vacancies. If you are the current vacancies...
Yeah, how many vacancies do you have?
I know at the time that I was creating the budget, I believe the police department had five vacancies, and, um, and then I think...
I think at one point since July, you told us how many vacancies and what the value of that position was, or those positions were, so I was curious what that was. And what I could find from under the request tab, October nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, page seven, citywide personnel service budget, from the chart provided, there's a hundred-and-fifty-one employees, it says that there's three-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand, two-hundred-and-ten new money, is that correct?
Let me see where you were.
Because that's not jiving with what you presented on page twenty-six.
Tell me what you were looking at, please.
Page seven.
Of which memo?
The requested of October nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, page seven, citywide personnel service budget, it's a...
Okay, the reason that has changed is because we increased the part-time, or the overtime for the fire department. That is why that part has changed.
So that's the difference of why from here to there, from page twenty-six of the new packet tonight?
Yes, so...
So, what I'm trying to wrap my head around is this, so, back to that same tab, page two is the tax cap formula. We were once at three-point-four-seven, which would raise a hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars of new money. But we have to recognize that our health insurance from page four, you're saying is gonna go up approximately fourteen percent, so that's basically three-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars. Page five, the New York State Retirement, since they underestimated the new salaries, I believe that you told me last night, we're looking at an additional two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. Page five, the total general fund expenses is going up one-point-nine, but I think it's changed since October nineteenth, because this looks like it's a whole lot different. And then, of course, page six is the transit center. I believe in twenty-twenty-six, you've delayed it until the, oh, the second half of the year, but we're still looking at a five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar payment.
We will not need to worry about, um, the, the OPT transit having a large deficit until two thousand twenty-eight. So there's, I'm predicting a small deficit for twenty-seven, but it's not until two thousand twenty-eight that we have to be concerned about the larger deficit.
So will we have to make an opinion, because that's why on page six of that tab, it said we were gonna make a five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar payment, is that, so we're projecting that in twenty-six?
Um, let me see what you're looking at.
I'm just trying to understand how much new money we need to have. Page six.
You're looking at your October nineteenth memo, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so on page eight, I talk about the transit hub.
How about page six? Transit center.
So if, in, um, hold on there. Into, in two thousand twenty-six, we're going to be able to use two years' worth of our fifty-three-eleven operating aid to balance the budget.
Okay.
In two thousand twenty-seven, we'll also be able to use two years' worth to balance the budget, because we've got twenty-four, twenty-five, and then twenty-six, twenty-seven.
You're recognizing STOW, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, recognizing STOW, and while, while STOW is different than the fifty-three-eleven operating aid, that comes from the federal government.
Correct.
And, um, so we'll be able to do twenty-six and twenty-seven. Twenty-seven will, I'm predicting, they have a small deficit, about fifty thousand dollars, so it's not until twenty-eight that we will not have the additional fifty-three-eleven aid by then. So it's not until '28 that we will not have the additional fifty-three eleven aid by then.
Okay.
So that gives us two years to finish our conversations with the county and the state as far as changing the operations of OPT.
Okay. But at some point, we're on the hook for that bond, and we have to start making payments. That's all I'm trying to understand, is the new money.
Oh, are you, you're talking about the BAN on Market Street?
Correct.
Okay, yes, the BAN for Market Street is already in the 2026 budget.
Right.
We have a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar principal payment, and we have a hundred and twenty thousand dollar interest payment.
Right, that's where I get the five fifty.
We postponed doing the long-term financing because the interest rates are coming down.
Right.
So we'll be doing the long-term financing by May of '26.
Okay. So as we were talking about last night, I'm just trying to understand how much new money we need to budget. And ultimately, tonight, I think you gave us on this page twenty-six, we're introducing two point two five million new monies that we need to raise.
Yes, and as.
That's recognizing, are we subtracting the one point eight out of the unrestricted fund balance for this two point five, or did we go higher than the one point eight?
No, the two point, the two point five, are you talking about the?
Yeah, the page twenty-six of the, we were just on, for the packet that you gave me tonight.
Yes. Eight hundred and seventy-one thousand of that is from the restricted reserves.
I see that.
Yeah.
So then two point one.
Yeah, so the two point, the, so the balance of that, let me just go back there. So the two point one, eight hundred and seventy-one thousand is coming from reserves.
Right.
So that, that's about a million two or so that is new monies that we need to raise. Now, the general fund revenue between the tax levy and the other, other revenues in the '26 budget was increased by almost seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, which is huge for a one-year adjustment in a general fund. And then with the real property tax, if you decide to go with what's in front of you, that's five hundred and sixty-three thousand. And what Lynn and I were talking about last night, let's look at the one point eight million that we're taking from unrestricted fund balance. So I told them that if we get the occupancy tax through, I am pretty confident the city's going to receive at least four hundred thousand from the county's numbers that Alan has already shared with me. That's going to be new monies coming in, usually from people that are here visiting Oneonta. If we institute paid parking, which I think is going to be an easy thing to do, to raise probably five hundred thousand dollars, as I said to you last week, I get lots of requests for parking permits out our window. If we were just to sell a hundred dollars per semester, we would get five thousand requests. That's five hundred thousand dollars right there. That was what our intent was with the paid parking, was to cover the bond for the council. So nine, that's nine hundred thousand dollars. That's equivalent to a sixteen percent tax levy increase. And then, if, if the state is able to increase the temporary, make the temporary state aid permanent, that's another two hundred and fifty-nine thousand. And then take that and subtract it all from the one point eight, that leaves you with basically six hundred thousand, which I told Lynn and Scott, that if we raise taxes again next year by the six hundred thousand, and those revenues come through for us, that fills your one point eight million deficit. But we can't do that yet because we don't have any of that in place. But thinking long-term, as far as your plans of building your other revenue sources, you're able to depend on your fund balances for a while to get those things in place. So paid parking has to be taken very seriously and implemented effectively, and the occupancy tax really needs to go through because that is good money for us. Also, our sales tax revenue that we have budgeted, from what Alan has told me, we will probably be even receiving more than we have in the budget because of the way the state is now going to be distributing the occupancy tax and the short-term rental tax to the county, because they're not going to be able to differentiate it. So if they just get one sales tax payment with no detail, then the city gets twelve percent of that. So, but we won't know that until time and experience gives us that information. So that's why I'm comfortable appropriating the one point eight million. I really don't want to go higher than that. That's my comfort level, because I know in the future, we have plans to bring that number way down.
Right.
So, but I do not know what the, you know, as Alan reported last week, I don't think you were here for his presentation. They are predicting that the state retirement numbers are going to be double digits for a number of years, and it's because of the high pensions that they are paying for all of the salary adjustments. And as I've told you before, now the uniform personnel in Tier Two is forty-two percent a year of their annual salary, and Tier Six is like thirty-eight percent. We used to budget three percent years ago. So that's how much it has grown in our, in our budget. So, and the only way we can control that is to control the salaries that we pay. We cannot, we cannot control what the state does as far as their rates. We are mandated to pay those rates when they tell us.
So just to kind of finish this, so the, I think, coming out to the public that we understand that you're suggesting a two-year plan. The two-year plan is basically like ten percent on a tax levy rate.
Yeah, I'm really projecting the three-year plan. I had asked last year for six hundred thousand, thinking if we did it three years in a row, you did three hundred. So now, we're just a little behind, so I'm thinking a three-year plan to get us where we need to be. And giving, doing the three years gives you time to see what those other revenues will come in at. Will the state aid be increased? And I know that we have talked about the state aid not being increased since 2011, but where the state has increased for us is in our CHIPS programs. All of our, the CHIPS, the state touring, the, you know, the POC program, which is Fill Our Potholes or something, and the extreme weather. They have really increased the city's funds that way. And right now, all of those funds is what's funding all of our street repairs. So, so if they're able to increase the aim, and also, as I said, the paid parking, the sales tax revenues, and the occupancy tax, it will get, if you do it on a slow and, I'm going to say, slow and steady basis, give yourself three years of doing the six hundred thousand, it gives you time to adjust. So maybe next year, maybe the ask won't be six hundred, maybe it'll be five hundred or four hundred. But you just need to give yourself some time to see how the numbers are created.
And so, go back to motion ten on tonight's agenda. Sorry, this is taking me a while to get to it. So ultimately, we've been averaging one point five million dollars back on the books when we get all said and done, correct?
Correct, well, yeah, around there, yeah.
I mean, that's what it's averaged for the last four years. So, one point five, so is your intention, I'm just asking questions, is your intention to take basically that one point five, because at some point Greg will find out how many vacant positions, which is the majority of this one point five, besides steel stacks, bridging, that we put it into these different types of funds?
Yes, yes.
The six hundred thousand that you're asking for is balancing today's budget, but we know that there's one point five coming back, right?
Yes.
So it's really three hundred thousand that we're down, and it's representative that we haven't filled those vacant positions.
Well, the, one of the memos that I gave to you back in July detailed how we ended up with a surplus for 2024. And because we had two million dollars of additional revenues, and then the savings of, but also what we spent from our reserves, ended up with a little over, you know, the one point five surplus. And yes, it is our intentions for any surpluses that we receive by the end of the close of the year, is to reinvest that surplus into the restricted reserves, and that's how we keep those purposes funded. And that way, if you can hold your unrestricted fund steady, but then take those surpluses and reinvest them into your designated purposes, that shows investors that you've got long-term thinking and that you are saving for the items that you need. And as Greg mentioned last week, we need a million to a million and a half every year just for our capital investment. That's vehicle replacements, tool replacements, you know, the big, the big items that, that cost a lot of money. And then, with the fire apparatus, which are the most expensive pieces that we have, that will come every ten to fifteen years. So we've got to think about setting those funds aside, just like we're doing with the water worth, right? We are trying to build that revenue up so we are able to invest in replacing one to two miles every year when we eventually get our reserves up to that level. Because in the water worth presentation that we showed you last week, our goal is to invest three million dollars every year in replacing our water infrastructure. So we need to build the reserves up in the general fund for the same, same thing. It doesn't mean that we won't keep pursuing grants, or, or, you know, foundation gifts, donations, you know, or grants for, you know, the large items, and also at the state level.
Lynn?
So I guess the last thing, I asked you last night, you didn't have the answer. At some point, though, I think you should really flush that plan out. If we go down this path of two years of ten percent, that, what is the number that you need?
After that, yeah.
Three, four, five, right? So I think that would really help us if we knew that. So you've given us kind of a partial plan, ten percent, we understand where you want to go with the money, but it's the after.
Yeah, and as I told you last night, I wouldn't have time to do that today for tonight's meeting, but, you know, hopefully by next week's meeting, I can have time to put that together.
Okay. All right, I'd like to go back to the question at hand, the first question, we have two, acknowledging Shannon's concern as well, but the first question is whether or not we are adding this executive assistant position at something along the lines of mid-seventies all-in, right, to the budget, and is there anybody who would not support that? Just raise your hand. Would not, would not support that?
Could I?
Yes, go ahead.
So I would not support removing the part-time HR position from the budget at the expense of the additional position. So for me, it's a hundred thousand.
Okay. So it's at least seventy thousand, and for you, a hundred thousand?
Yeah.
But nonetheless, we have Dawn that is not supportive of that. Is there anybody else who isn't supportive of adding this into the budget?
Where did we say we were getting the money from?
We haven't figured it out.
We haven't figured it out. So we spent the money, but we don't know.
Right, well, that's, you know, yeah, that's the process, right? Yeah. But my question is still, so we can move on.
I recognize that Greg needs help because, absolutely, I just got an email from him, I think it was four minutes after one.
Yes.
So I know that he's putting in the long hours, and I don't deny that of Greg, but I am curious about what kind of person we're looking for.
But, so we have one person that is not supportive of that, and if there's anybody else who's not, just let me know that.
I guess.
All right, it seems like we have a majority, let's say that, that's supportive of. We want to go to.
I don't know where I stand yet.
We don't care.
Well, we have a majority.
You don't care about where I stand, that's okay.
I care about where you stand, where you stand. I'm trying to find the majority here. Shannon, you had expressed concern about the.
Well, I just want to make sure that salary-wise, like I was looking at Department of Works administrative. So we're still staying at the recommended, the one fifteen. Is that the plan?
What is it? Tell me what you're looking at.
Well, it's, well, for the base salaries, fifty thousand six for Department of Works.
Are you talking about his request for salary adjustments, or are you talking?
So where did we land on? Because I was not here. So where did we land on for?
Go ahead, Cecilia.
Well, to answer Shannon's question, I believe we're taking up the questions around salary in the Finance and HR Committee meeting. So, so those kinds of like nuanced questions about where we're going to end up and what we're going to add or not add, we're going to address there.
So Shannon, also to answer your question, right now, what's in the tentative budget is the normal increases outlined in the administrative manual currently. There are some adjustments, which you probably. Excuse me, one minute.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is it, so it's the fifteen hundred?
It's the fifteen hundred right now, and this is, this is the current heading.
Oh, there it is.
Thank you.
And what I did, you already had the same binder, but I just.
Great, and it was the fifteen hundred, so.
This is a detail of what's not in the budget, but what was requested. And this is the ETL, oh, sorry, that's cash made, et cetera, these, this is in the budget. These are in the budget for additional adjustments. In here, the city clerk, we increased our IT station from two thousand to five thousand. And then, these, these are in there, these are not in the budget, okay? And Lynn, I don't think you were here for this. This is the current administrative manual. And then what I did is I reprinted these just for ease. This, these positions are not in the budget, these requests are not in the budget.
Right.
These requests, these requests are in the budget.
So ultimately, the admin folks are looking to get a percentage instead of a flat rate? Is that what's going on?
Yes.
Is that the gist in the question?
Yes, yes.
Well, Lynn, what'd you say?
I believe the administrative folks are looking for a percentage raise instead of a flat rate.
Right.
That's correct. That's what we.
We have a lot.
The discussion focused on that, yes.
Chris?
Sorry. The request for adding that right now, the hundred percent, the part we need of the salary study for 2023, plus the cost of living increase based on the social security, the cost of living increase of three point two percent for 2024, two point five percent in 2025.
What was, what's 2024 percentage?
Three point two percent.
I'm sorry, you walked back. Hey, you want to retrope?
No, you can't.
No, no, no.
And let me make this very clear.
That's the level.
Hang on a second.
Yeah, I just want to make it very clear to the council, administrators cannot receive retroactive pay. It is illegal.
We're not looking for that.
They're, they're, they are not a collective bargaining unit. They are not a union. We, and we also, with different regulations, we cannot appear that we are negotiating with administrators, because it's not allowed.
Great, but cost of living is allowed.
I'm sorry, Lynn.
So Ginny, you've been here six years, I believe. When's the last time that administrative staff was presented with enough flattery?
It's been probably before George was here as the manager. When, when did he get hired? Yeah, it was, I think, two thousand, I can go back and look. Can I give a little bit of history on the admin manual? Okay, so just so everybody knows, I'm just going to kind of, I'm going to sum it up very quickly. The, under Dave Brenner, when he became mayor, he created the admin manual because he, when he got here, he saw that the administrators had no guidelines to their work conditions or what benefits they were going to receive. Also, there was really no legal authority to point to as far as how they were getting paid. So he created the administrative manual, and what the administrative manual used to do was it gave percent raises. And then they found that the percent raises were growing people too quickly, and the, the positions were becoming too expensive. So then we discussed flat raises, and then we ended up compromising, and it was the cost of living as of October of the year with a minimum and a maximum. So the minimum at the time was nine hundred dollars, the maximum was twelve hundred dollars. And then that would get adjusted by maybe a hundred dollars in future years. And then, then we went to flat raises. When the administrator, it was under George, I'm pretty sure it was under George, we built a new grid, and we ended up going with flat raises. We now have all of the union contracts under flat raises, because the dollar amounts, we can recalculate them back to tell you what the percentage raise is, but now every city employee receives a flat dollar raise between their base and their longevity, and there's no more percent calculations. So that, that's just a quick history. And what happened, and one, one part that I'm leaving out is that what happened was how the administrative manual was presented for council approval is that the mayor, who then got replaced by the city manager or the city administrator, the HR director and the finance director, would look at different aspects of the administrative manual and suggest updated changes depending on what we thought the need was at the time. So it is, that, that has been the history of how the recommendations have come to council. And so now, because we don't have an HR director, now it is just Greg and. And so now, because we don't have an HR director, now it is just Greg and myself. And when the administrators meet as, you know, for a meeting to discuss different things, Greg and I do not attend.
Yes.
I just have a question for Jenny. I just want to clarify, so the percent increase was too expensive, is that correct? Was that creating a compression?
It, well, it was doing two things. First of all, the top people were moving much too fast and, and the position got too expensive. And then it was making the gap between the salaries much too big. So one thing that I was, one thing that happened when the grids were created, and especially in the salary study, and Greg, please, you know, correct me if I say anything incorrectly, but at the time that the salary study was done, every position in the city was studied. It was studied for job duties, job responsibilities, supervision, work duties, qualifications to get the job, and it was also compared to not only the salary study itself, but it was also compared to the NICOM salary study. So we were looking at other municipalities. That is how the admin, if you want to call them grids or grades, got created. All of those details were looked at and determined on what the job duties were. So for example, finance director for the city of Oneana may have a totally different job than a finance director for the city of Norwich, just because of how their organization is done. So, but it does give you a guideline, you know, for example, a city clerk. Some, some are clerk treasurers because the clerk is also doing the finance director's job. Some are just doing a clerk job. A fire chief may be a fire chief, but also in charge of a full code enforcement department. So it's, it's, there, you have to be, you have to be careful on what you can, you know, how you compare because you've got to find out what the job duties are. And that's why when we looked at the job duties, we looked at responsibilities, supervision, you know, detail, and that's, that's how we ended up figuring it out. So does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. That's very helpful. Thank you.
Counsel?
So when it comes to department heads, if they were going to get raises, would it be flat for all department heads that they increase or would it be based on individual performance? Because I think as Greg, as you're the, you know, the city administrator, you would, isn't your job to judge how the department heads are doing and if they're doing well, they get bigger raises and some are not doing as well? Does it work like that?
I'm not aware of, of that being done in the past, honestly.
It is, we have never had merit raises here in the history that I have been here. There's never been merit raises based on performance. Everybody was treated on the same formula, either that, the formula based on percentage or the formula based on flat raises.
So why, but you're not judging your work. So someone who's being an outstanding department head and compared to someone who's not just getting along.
From what I understood, and I'm going to be speaking for Mayor Brenner when he, what he told me is that by treating people with the same and not doing merit raises, it took the political decisions out of the pay raises. I understand.
Cecilia, as the Chair of the Finance and Human Resources Committee, where do you see this conversation going?
I think we could take it up in our next meeting. I think that would be suitable and we could have more of a detailed discussion that is both part of the broader budget discussion, but also I think more nuanced and more looked at that, given the time.
Right, and that'll precede a meeting, well, actually, how does the, what's the logistics of that thing?
Depends on how this meeting goes, you know. You know, we had scheduled a special council budget meeting back in July for Thursday, the 13th at 5:00 with the finance meeting being at 6:00. So if we thought there was more to discuss with the budget and it was only going to take an hour, we could do that. If we thought there was more to discuss with the budget, it's going to take more than an hour, we could do what we did last week and have the finance meeting first, followed by a budget meeting and just carry on as long as it may take. Because essentially by next Thursday, by the end of that meeting, we need to know what's going to be in the tentative budget that's going to be approvable so that Jenny and I can, Jenny can put that together in the final format, kind of like what you have tonight, but, you know, any updates to that so that you have that in front of you on Tuesday, the 18th to vote on. Because at that point, to make any changes, you need to vote on individual line items and that becomes a real administrative nightmare if you want to make a lot of changes at that point. So we'd like to get through that before.
So expectation based on our last Finance and Human Resources Committee meeting and budget combo is probably we'll do the forest piece first and then move on to budget. So that said, I wonder, we haven't talked about anything that we want to strike from this budget. Is, as people have looked at this budget, is there anything that you see that you'd like to have a discussion around removing? Yes, no?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Well?
I don't, I don't mind coming back on the 13th and have that discussion.
Sure, sure. That's, that's fine too, but as we have a little bit of time here, you've got a few minutes left before you want to cut out, right? For the purposes of being able to more clearly define where we're going, where Jenny's going with this, is there, is there any item of, you know, any specific item that you want to have some conversation around in this?
I don't think we've fully flushed out how we're going to fund this. Our finance director says she doesn't feel comfortable going beyond or above 1.8 million out of our budget from now. We've added a bunch of stuff in, but we haven't trimmed it.
That's where I'm at right now.
So rather than trying to cram it in on our third hour, I think we just agreed to the schedule, we were set for October 13th. It gives everybody an opportunity to digest tonight's paperwork, lift, lift the weights a few times, you know, and have a little conversation. Finance can talk about the administration manual and we can talk about the budget.
All right, Dawn?
Is there another way of doing it? We're, I, I don't want, I don't feel comfortable saying, you know, line 27 on page four, we should get rid of, but say that we only want to spend so much money and each organ has to take.
I think we're beyond that. Yeah, I appreciate where you, where you're coming from, but I believe that that exercise has been, we've gotten beyond that. I think if there are budget items until Lynn's point, if it requires having a few days to take a look at it and compose your thoughts and we'll have as efficient a conversation as we can around whatever budget items we want to be removing, I think there's value in that. We're not going to kick the can back to the staff and ask them or the department heads and ask them to go back in and make those modifications.
As I understand it, we'd have to identify specific items.
I would say that if we want to remove something from the budget, we're at that point. Are you okay, Scott?
Yeah.
Oh, man. All right. Jenny, where's your comfort level right now?
I, I believe that we have more discussion to do. I think that we, next week, we need to meet again and, but I just want to make sure that from all the budget request forms and all the detail that you've been given, if every council member has had the opportunity to discuss the items that they want discussed, and I know one of them is the admin salaries and especially the clerk's position and the, the new position for Greg's assistant. So I think that discussion needs to be continued. However, if we're going to add those monies in, it's not just the base salary, you have to remember that it's FICA and retirement on top of it.
Absolutely.
And then we have to figure out how we're going to fund it unless we're going to reduce the budget in another area.
So again, going back to, and I'll go right to you, Mike, getting back to the, the larger ask of council is that we, you're all, like, everybody knows these pages inside and out, but let's really take a couple of, you know, take the hours that are required so that we're able to come back and make a cogent argument for whatever it might be that you feel we can trim this budget by, by removal. Go ahead, Mike.
Cross this question or, for those of you who weren't here last week, I said, you know, I talked about that admin position, that that to me is more important than some of the other things that were in the preliminary budget. But I don't feel qualified to, like, I can say, like, I think we should choose a vehicle that we need to cut. I don't feel qualified to say, to tell staff which vehicle we should purchase, but like, if it came to the point where like we needed to find $50,000 to, in order to fund this position, which is important to me, I'd say, yes, these certain vehicles should be replaced, but one of them could wait one more year.
Remember, that's coming from the reserves, that's not coming from the operations.
Okay, well, it's not, right.
Yeah, that, that's all.
Not the best example, but we understand what you're trying to say.
But, so, so that takes a minute, my process question is how can, help me out, guys, I've been doing this before, how can we let staff make the decisions that we trust them to make, but still give them enough guidance to say, these are things we think we should cut in order to have these other things?
I think you've got your budget request forms that are giving you their rationale for whatever it is that they'd like to have added and you're just going to need to make the decision based on our more holistic view of the budget as to whether or not you feel that's a priority within the context of running the city. Does that sound about right?
Definitely.
Yes.
I mean, I was just going to add, this is where the decisions get tough because.
That's right.
You know, I, the, the request to go back to staff to look for more cuts or, you know, things, we can ask the staff for input, but at this point, they have told us what is needed and now it's up to us to figure it out.
And the clock is ticking.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was dramatic.
Yeah, well, it was dramatic, I suppose, but it's true. It is actually true.
I mean, literally.
Yeah, it is literally ticking. All right, so we're going to leave, there's really nothing more that we're going to be or wanting to do here within the context of this meeting, you know. You tell me if you think yes.
It's all up to the council's appetite to continue talking about the budget. There's a lot more to talk about.
There is a lot, there, and, and beware, so, so there is a lot more to talk about. We're going to, we're going to have the Finance and Human Resources Committee meeting that will take place at what time? Is it five?
We'll switch that to five.
We'll switch that to five.
And just so you know, the.
So is it reasonable to come at, by 30, 6 o'clock? Yes. Okay.
Unless you want to put on the ad.
The other, the other things that we need to still discuss with council is the capital plan that you received tonight, so if you take some time to read that, that way you can be prepared for next week's conversation.
And at least focus on the 2026, anything that starts in 2026 obviously is, is more, you know, pressing than the 2017.
And then we also need to discuss the water and sewer rate tables.
Yes.
Okay?
I'm anxiously awaiting that.
Yes, so.
Why don't we quickly just go over what you're thinking on that, Jenny?
Sure.
Yes, yeah, we've got.
So on the water and sewer, what we were looking for was the general revenues to go up by 10%. And we were able to adjust the revenues that we received from the college by a very large amount because of what happened in 2025. And so what I'm looking to do, and you have to remember that we only raised the minimum on the water last year by $5 instead of 10. So in looking at getting kind of, I don't want to say caught up, but back on track for the future of the presentation that we showed you on Thursday, I would like the council to consider raising the minimum on the water by at least $10, if not 15, to make up for the $5 from last year. And then by raising the first three steps by 10%, then the next steps by maybe 1% to 3%. The higher steps do not need the increase like we did last year because they are, go ahead.
Well, you can interrupt your sentence, I just have a follow-up question.
Okay, so, so that, that is what I would like you to consider and I can build those tables to show you how the bills would change for that level of consumption.
That would be helpful. Go ahead, Jenny.
So the theory last year was that this was a, a rate table based on rewarding conservation. Every year, we have had a situation where we're monitoring the reservoir, whether it's, whether it actually reaches a, a level of concern or not, we're always sort of concerned with it. Also, could you just tell us, so, so I think that's something to keep in mind, right? This idea of who needs what is, is interesting to me because it kind of is, is counter to like what, what we went for last year. The other thing is, could you just tell me if the revenue from last year, and I'm sorry, again, I'm sure it's here, I just don't have it like at my fingertips, if the revenue from last year, regardless of source, the total revenue from water sales was on track higher, lower, or on target with the planned water worth projections?
Now, do you mean for, when you say last year, do you mean 24 or 25?
I mean, whatever we approved that you're trying to move us away from, I'm curious about how that went. It was kind of an experiment, right?
Okay, so I, I, I'm going to have to separate it for you just only because of, of how, how the tables were adjusted.
But I'm not sure why, because like the water worth presentation, I'm sorry, I'm just, and so I'm hoping maybe you can explain, because the water worth presentation is about water revenue, our fund revenue, total revenue, in order to be able to save for future infrastructure products, projects, correct?
Correct.
So was the total revenue higher, lower, or on track?
I think it's going to be a little bit higher than what we have in the budget in total.
Okay.
Okay.
And so isn't that a good thing?
It is a good thing, but what I want the council to be aware of is that you're depending on 21 users to fund that when we have 3,800. So you're, you're depending on a very small number of customers to do the majority of the funding.
Okay, I think it's also worth mentioning that it's based on consumption.
Yes.
Where not, not who they are, what type of entity they are.
No, I understand that, but I also, I also want the council to understand that those 21 customers do not have the ability to control the consumption to the level of the homeowner because they, they are housing hundreds of people.
Sure.
So, and, and, you know, I, I can attest to the colleges, and Scott, you can back me up on this, they've already put in the low-flow showerheads and the low-flush toilets and all of that. The colleges have invested in that infrastructure to bring the water consumption down. But I just want you to be aware that depending on 21 to 26 large users to fund such a majority of the water and sewer is a concept that I just think you need to discuss.
All right, I think we're going to leave it there.
Yep.
And people are, we're going to get out and get on the road in six hours, something like that. So we'll all meet sometime between 5:00 and 5:30. The Finance Committee will kick off at 5:00. Those of you who are on that committee, I expect will be there at 5:00. And if there are.
It's next Thursday?
Yes.
I just want to, I just want to ask, is, is there any information that you don't have that you would like me to provide you? What is that?
That's a good question. I'll let you know.
Okay.
Can I just make a request, though? Make your job easier, so like if we have a question, we put an email to you so not everybody's asking the same question, can we just see everybody?
That's exactly what I do, but I have not received any emails, just so you know.
Questions upfront ahead of time just gives us time to prepare for them, makes it more efficient.
Right.
Please do that.
And which is similar to what I'm asking as well is that we, we really do wind up doing our, our homework so that we're here on Thursday, we're, we're right on the money for what we want.
But when any, when any council member emails me with a question, my reply is I always reply to everyone.
All right, if there are no objections, I'm going to say goodnight, folks. Meeting adjourned.
And I'd just like to say, polls close in one minute.